All right, welcome to the Thursday, June 25th, 2023 o'clock special meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Muldoon has an excused absence and everyone else is here.
All right, I'll go ahead and take care of the invocation. I'll have Mayor Protem Avery handle the pledge of allegiance. If you could stand with me, please.
Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to gather as a body. We ask that you give us wisdom and patience. We ask that you watch over our public safety personnel. We ask that you watch over our men and women in the hospitals. We ask that you watch over those people who are sick. We ask that you get them better. We ask that you watch over those people who are healthy. Grant them the wisdom to know what situations to go into. Please watch over them and keep them healthy as well. We ask that you watch over us as we go into this body, this deliberative proceeding, and we ask you guide us through the decision-making process, Lord. In these things, we ask in thy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll first take public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? Do we have any calls on non-agenda? Okay, we'll go right into it. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing for a review of Cliff Drive encroachment permit number N2020-0366 at Ensign Intermediate School. I'm going to give a quick procedural overview of what we're going to do today so that everyone is on the same page. First, what we're going to do is we're going to ask city staff to come up and explain an overview of where we are. I appreciate the staff report. That was fairly detailed and gave us a good update, but for those folks who haven't read it, I'd like to do a quick overview and a discussion. If there are any questions of council, by council members during that time period, you're welcome to do so. I'll then open the floor to the, in this case, the project applicant is Newport Mesa Unified School District. So at that point, we will go ahead and bring up any speaker or speakers. Normally, we give 10 to 15 minutes, so that's what we'll do, is we'll go about 10 to 15 minutes for the applicant to give a presentation, at which point we'll go out. Oh, and if there are any questions, given that they're an applicant, I'd like to make sure we wait until the end of their presentation to ask questions, but there will be an opportunity for council to ask any questions during that time. There will be a second opportunity afterward as well, but during that time period, just hold your questions till the end and then go ahead and ask the questions. And then we'll go out to public comment. For public comment, it doesn't look like we, I think we'll be okay keeping it at three minutes. I'm going to give a couple of people a little bit extra time just because they represent groups, but we'll keep it at three minutes each, and then we're going to put an hour cap on the public comments in total. So be respectful of other people if you think you're coming up toward, if you think that there's going to be more than an hour of public comment. It'd be great if you could limit it to less than three minutes. And then what we'll be doing from that point forward, and then we'll bring it back. Once our public comments are done, we'll give an additional five minutes of rebuttal to the school district to respond, and then we'll bring it back up here. During that, at the end of that five minutes, council, you can also ask questions of the district. At the end of that, we'll deliberate as a body and make a decision and move forward. So that is where we're headed today. All right, with that said, I'll invite city staff to come on up and handle the presentation.
All right. Mayor O'Neill, council members, my name is Jim Houlihan. I'm the Deputy Public Works Director and City Engineer, and this afternoon, we are, as you mentioned, we're discussing the encroachment permit for the Cliff Drive improvements. If you can move to the slide. No, I'll do that. I forgot. Okay, the improvements in question today that we're discussing are located adjacent to the Ensign Intermediate School, and they fall between Irvine Avenue and St. Andrews Road. They're on the north side of Cliff Drive, and again, adjacent to Ensign Intermediate School. Little bit background, the school property is exempt from city plan check and our permitting process. What we have the authority is what is falling within the public right-of-way. And in this photo, it's adjacent, it's on Cliff Drive, this photo is taken, and the street, the sidewalk, and that strip of grass is the public right-of-way, and that's where our jurisdiction lies. The fence, the footing, and everything inside that fence is on the school property and falls within the state of California's jurisdiction. So a brief timeline of the interactions with the school district, between the city and the school district, between February 2019 and 2020, some of the events that occurred, the city's traffic engineer provided initial comments to the preliminary plans in March of 2019, and the district incorporated modifications to the driveway geometrics in a June 2019 set of plans that were provided to the city. And the Department of State Architecture approved the plans in July of 2019, but note that the improvements to the public right-of-way were not part of that approval. The district board approved the plans for bid in October, and the district provided the city a construction schedule in January of 2020. And then the district board awarded the construction contract in February of 2020. And as part of the construction contract, the contractor was required to obtain the encroachment permit for the work in the public right-of-way. In February 2020, the city, the district, and the contractor began detailed discussions regarding the improvements in the public right-of-way. In February and March, staff provided the district an alternative concept for Cliff Drive, the drop-off area, for consideration. And this is the exhibit showing the alternative that was provided by city staff. The intent of the concept was to widen Cliff Drive to allow cars to stay out of the bike lane, as this has been occurring over the last few years when parents double park during pickup mainly.
Jim, just give me one second. So just so, if anyone's having trouble seeing this, you can also go ahead and look in the packet that has been provided. It's at page 1-5.
Some of these drawings are really hard to see up on the screen.
I just want to make sure people understood that they could go to both online and also the, we've provided paper copies in the lobby. Thank you.
Okay. So this alternative, of course, didn't include the parking that the district had shown, but it was a trade-off to maintain the aesthetics of the school and the neighborhood. So in March, the district submitted plans for the encroachment permit, March of this year, for the Cliff Drive permit for the encroachment. The city staff reviewed the plans and provided some minor comments, specifically, there's a small median in Cliff that we had requested to be removed and replaced with pavement. In June, the plans were resubmitted and provided the revisions that we had requested, and the district also agreed to remove a portion of the sidewalk and install street trees to fill in the gaps. And the encroachment permit was issued in June, on June 16th. So listed here are those improvements that were included on that plan that we, city staff, issued the permit for. And in doing so, when issuing the encroachment permit, there are three main findings that staff makes, and listed here are those findings. The work on the Cliff Drive public right-of-way passed those requirements, and therefore, we issued the permit.
So let's stop there for a second. This is a question more for our city attorney. So I just want to work through this. So when we're evaluating the appeal that is currently before us, could you explain the legal standards that we need to work through up at the dais eventually when we get to the point of making a decision?
Certainly. So whether you uphold or overturn the public works director's decision, these are the three factors that you'll be considering, and you need to look for evidence that supports each one of these factors in making your determination. This is a de novo review, so you're looking at it fresh, but you have to have evidence to support, you know, not making one of those findings if you were to overturn the public works director.
When, in, this is the lawyer in me, so I got to ask the question. So the second one, the second and third both use the word unreasonably. That's the standard?
Yes.
How does that standard apply? So what are we looking for when we're trying to determine whether something is unreasonable?
Well, I think you'd need some evidence that there's an impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic or parking spaces. You know, it is a little bit of a, kind of know-it-when-you-see-it standard, but you'd need something, some evidence that it does interfere with it. So as we get into the evidence, we can take a look at that and talk about it and see whether or not that's reasonable or not.
I guess what I'm trying to work through is just mere interference, though, isn't the standard. It's unreasonable interference. So in the context of this, I guess that's a fair point. I'll ask the question when we start receiving evidence on this, or we're talking through the evidence, but I wanted to make sure that I was kind of working through that standard.
It needed to be significant, not just general interference.
All right, well, maybe we'll come back as we're talking this through then. Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Okay. And this plan right here is the improvement plan for the encroachment permit, and specifically, it shows more than what falls in the right-of-way, but specifically, what the city is looking at is the work within the right-of-way, and that includes two driveways and then the removal of the median. And following, when we had received this, additional comments were made in conditions which included the removal of some sidewalk and the addition of trees, which were agreed upon by the district. So that was included in the permit, the conditions.
Can we ask questions?
Absolutely.
Oh, sure.
Thank you, Jim. A couple of years ago, the city experienced an issue regarding trees. It was a private project, and residents, there's over on the peninsula, residents got very concerned because trees were cut down when there were bird nests in the trees. So I thought we passed some kind of requirement at that time. Now, that was private property, so obviously, there's a distinction, but what is our tree ordinance regarding bird nests? Because there's a limit, we've imposed a limitation, and maybe the city attorney can comment on that as well. We do have a restriction on trees that are removed in the city during nesting times.
Yeah, there are federal laws and Fish and Game Code sections that deal with nesting, and they do limit when you can do the work, and there's also environmental concerns associated with that. I don't believe any of those are present at this point related to this.
I'm sorry, can I do a follow-up?
Sure.
Do they, so who enforces that, though? I mean, that's kind of, that's part of the, that's part of the challenge in discussing this, because one of the slides previously it said that school district is generally, doesn't have to come to us for permits or things like that. So would we have, would we have been involved in approving any Fish and Wildlife Code sections or things like that?
We wouldn't have been involved in any of those approvals. There are some enforcement mechanisms that do fall to some of our enforcement officers who are out at the scene but didn't see any violations.
Well, okay, back to me.
So no permit, but some of the enforcement.
But I remember, and you know what issue I'm talking about, it was a very concerning issue to the residents in that neighborhood, and then all residents who cared about birds and nests, that I thought from there, and now that I'm remembering this too, that there was, we cited the state laws regarding this, but we required certain notices prior to, as a condition of receiving the permit, that they had to be cognizant of bird nests.
Well, there's no permit to be obtained here. There was no permit from the city to be obtained here.
So how does, to the mayor's question, how does that requirement get enforced for public property?
So the laws basically regulate when you can do certain construction activities and the situations where you can disturb, you know, trees that have bird nests in them, and there wasn't a violation of that here. So it's not a permitting requirement, it's more of a law that says you can do X, Y, or Z, and they were in compliance with that law.
Well, all I know is what I've read, heard in emails, that there were birds, the people saw birds flying out of trees.
And from my discussions with the police department about this, there was no violation of any laws associated with that.
Okay.
Can I, hang on, yeah, I want to seek one clarification on that, because that's an interesting point. So the, so if I understand correctly, what, we're talking about two different things. We're talking about the permit with conditions, and we're talking about generally applicable laws that if they're violated, they're enforced by either police or code enforcement on the one hand, and at the hearing right now, we're talking about the permit, and so that's why I'm trying to, it's an interesting point, but I want to make sure we're kind of talking about apples and apples here.
Yeah, so I think that's very important. The issue you're raising about the enforcement side of things and the violations of those laws, that's not before you today.
So if, I guess, stated other, I'm sorry, I'm trying to work this through in my head too.
All right.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, if this had been a normal project, like the private project that Councilmember Dixon's referencing, and we were adding conditions onto that permit, then that would have been something we could have put on, but because we're not permitting this project, that's not, that's not, I guess, in the cards, is one way of putting it.
That's right. And in fact, the work that was done on the school property, we didn't issue any permit for that at all, so it's completely outside of what you're looking at today. So even from a regulatory standpoint and looking at the permits, the work that was done with the birds were in the trees, that's not part of what's before you today. It's only the encroachment into the public right-of-way and the issuance of the permits for the driveway approaches. So all the work that was done on the school property, even from a regulatory standpoint, that's not in front of you today. And then as far as whether the laws were violated associated with cutting down the trees, that's not in front of you either.
All right, Ms. Brenner, I know, go ahead.
I think we're just trying to understand what the process is and who would have been responsible for granting those permits, and when our animal control officers went out there trying to ascertain at the last minute whether it was, who, what should the process have been so that that didn't happen?
So I'm going to take a step back. Maybe I should have done this to begin with. So anytime you're involved with a school district or other state type of entity, the city of Newport Beach itself doesn't have any regulatory control over zoning or the building permits associated with, you know, what happens on those properties. Typically, they go to the state architect to get their, you know, plans approved, and we don't issue a permit for any of the work that's happening on the school property. The city, in fact, would not even be involved at all in this project but for that they're intersecting with our public street and they're making some changes there. So the only thing that's really before you today is that public street interface with the school district. The whole project, as far as what they're doing on their property, is not before you today, and whether they violated any laws associated with the work that they did on their property, that is not before you today.
I think we'd like late, I mean, it doesn't have to be today, but I think we would like to understand this process, how it works, who does grant this permission, and so if you at a later time could help us to understand how this could have been prevented, and these birds could have not been flying around like crazy as they are, if we could understand that process a little bit better, then it would be helpful for us.
Yeah.
Not right now.
Okay.
Okay.
One more question, just to follow up on that. I mean, I think it's important for the city policymakers to understand, of course, there's many pieces of non-city property that's public property, and schools, our school property is a key example. In our city, does that, just for my own edification, does that mean that any non-city public agency can do whatever they want on their property without adhering to state or federal laws regarding birds, to be more specific?
Well, so whether zoning, zoning laws apply, or whether they need a building permit, you know, building code compliance, those differ a little bit depending on the type of entity. But in regards to complying with the laws of the state, there's still an obligation to comply with the laws of the state, and even in local laws, because those are not zoning or building, you know, in nature. So people need to still comply with the laws, but from my discussions with the police department, no laws were violated, but that's, like I said before, that's not before you today.
City laws may have been violated, but I mean, when we went through this with the peninsula property, I mean, there was a state law that was violated, I believe.
I believe so as well in that case.
Yeah, we got to stay focused, though.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Avery.
We've heard that.
I, working for a school district and having done a number of projects, I'm well familiar with the fact that school districts are separate entities. They go through the Office of the State Architect, and I believe the only real interest the city has, and they almost always help on this, is the fire side, where since we would be responding to a fire, in the review of a fire department would take place. So this, the reason I really called for this is because I felt for the last three months, we've had concerns from the residents coming forward, and just a general feeling that they were not being heard, and there were obviously concerns about the trees, concerns about safety. And so I think it's really important, even after the fact here sadly, that there is a forum for people to come and express their views on how this process rolled out for the community. And so I really don't have an issue with the permit side of this, but I do have an issue with people in the vicinity, our neighbors, sort of feeling that their concerns were disregarded. And certainly, there is sort of an environmental story here about the trees and what they provide in a community, and, you know, we work really hard in this town to protect our urban forest and to encourage people to grow trees, and, you know, they're expensive for private individuals to have, but they add so much to our community, so much to the air quality. It's important. So it was really sad to see a school district just do this and take those trees down, and I'm sure we're going to hear why that was on balance, the reason why they came to that decision. But, and it's up for, obviously, individuals to figure out whether it seemed rational to them or not. But it is, I've, of course, driven by there, and it's a definite loss for that community. And some people kind of get that loss and others don't. So some people, you know, could care less whether the trees are up or down, but I believe the majority of people in the neighborhood do care, and I think we'll hear from them, and I'm just glad that they'll be able to, in this, be able to take advantage of this forum to make their views known. And I would hope going forward, there would be perhaps more, more opportunity for public to get involved with what's happening in the types of projects within their, within their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Jim, I think it's a good time to go to the school district. What do you think?
Oh, if you'd like. There was just this slide and another slide, and that was it.
Yeah, let's go ahead and go to the school district on this one. Great. Thanks. Elani, why don't we, why don't we set it at 15? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Well, you're very welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry, just one second. We need to, is it possible to use that one, or would you?
Yes, I.
Great. That one's a little bit easier.
Here in the school business, you got to be flexible.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Am I ready?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, your very capable staff, and members of the public. My name is Spencer Covert, and I have worked with the school district for many, many years. I serve as its general counsel. I have been involved in this project along the way. I wanted you to know that our board president, Martha Flore, Sharma Toyer, and Karen Yelsey, members of our school board, are here today in addition for technical answers as opposed to jurisdictional questions, which quite frankly, I think your city attorney has very ably responded to. We have Tim Holcomb and Ara Zaresny, as well as our project architect, and as previously stated twice now, the plans and specifications go through the state of California Division of State Architect, and they have the complete and sole responsibility with respect to the plans. And I wanted to let you know that that included the entryway. So over here, we have the final approved plans, as well as with the three conditions that have been discussed, but included within the plans was everything above Cliff Drive. So, oh, thank you. Perfect.
Okay.
So for the record, the state of California was reviewing everything above Cliff Drive except for the encroachment permits, which of course is necessary to obtain from the city through an established definite process. I think it's very important, excuse me, that you look at your city report at page four, in which your city engineer states that because the district had complied with all applicable plans and specifications, that therefore, he was mandated to issue the permit. And so he issued the permit, and in addition, imposed three conditions which you see here that are listed in the permit. By the way, we included the permit as well, and the conditions are spelled out, and they deal with replacing trees that are in the sidewalk, consulting with the city arborist. They deal with removing existing striping and completing revised striping, and they deal with replacement of trees. And again, consistent-
So, I'm sorry, I just need you to stay as close to the mic as you can.
Of course, consistent with the, there you go, consistent with the city arborist requirements. The district has agreed to that, so therefore, this review, quite frankly, is exceedingly limited, which is whether or not, in fact, we have complied with the city's specifications. It is not a generalized discussion as to trees or to what may have taken and why the school district needed to perceive so rapidly in this matter. But I did want to say for the record that we deeply appreciate the fact that you brought this up for hearing so fast, because time is of the essence. This important school project needs to be completed before staff return on Wednesday, August 19th. So the reason why we proceeded as we did is so that the project could be completed. In addition, when the request for review was filed, I sent a letter to the city attorney dated June 17th, in which I advised him that the contractor will immediately proceed to commence the work on school district property. There's no question, but the trees that we took out, or the contractor took out, were on school district property. They're the property of the school board. It is ultimately the school board that is empowered by state law to make a decision with respect to those trees and the decision to implement this project. We did, in our report, provide you with four attachments. Due to time limitations, I won't say what they are, other than to say, we have a Newport Mesa safety plan that shows the importance of acting on these matters. We included the city permit, so you could see the conditions with which we are going to comply with. As far as community input, I want you to know that every school has what's known as a school site council. It's made up of parents and staff members. That school site council unanimously endorsed this entryway into the school and what will occur. Those are all your residents, your parents, who reside within the attendance boundaries of the Ensign Intermediate School. And attachment three, which is on page 30, is a letter from the parent, who is the president of the school site council, which is made up of both parents and staff members at the school. Therefore, jurisdiction and what your limited scope of review is, is very important. is very important in this matter. I would now like to turn to something that I think is very important. That is, while we appreciate the staff report, there is a serious matter with which we respectfully think the record is different. At the end of page two of the staff report, you will see it written that, "To date, the city staff has not received any feedback." I'll emphasize that. "Has not received any feedback on the alternative design." That's, of course, referring to the suggestion. In all due respect, that claim is not accurate. You will notice that the paragraph before that refers to that submittal being sent to the district on March 10. So, "No feedback," it says, "since March 10." We have provided a very detailed chronology. And I want you to notice that there is no reference in the city report to a face-to-face meeting that took place on the very following day, March 11, at the district office. That March 11 date is included within the chronology. Present at that meeting were both Mr. Holahan and Mr. Brine from the city. And present from the district were Mr. Holcomb and Ms. Zarensky. This meeting lasted for approximately 45 minutes, and the only topic on that agenda was the suggestions from the city. So there was a robust discussion that took place. The first thing the district needed to know was, was this a condition for issuance of the permit? Because the permit was alr, the curb cut permit was already pending. City staff, through those two gentlemen, said, "No, this is not a condition." In other words, it's not a requirement. It is a suggestion. The second thing that got into was a discussion between the two staffs. And the district said, "In all due respect, we don't believe the plan is safe. We don't believe public money should be spent. But oh, by the way, if you want a cut, so you can have a double line of traffic out in front of our school, will you hold us harmless? Because now you're imposing your permit on us." City staff said, "Oh, no. No, no, we won't hold you harmless. This is just a suggestion." After that date, the district continued to proceed with its project. It had a thought exchange, because we were under COVID. It had another meeting that was open to the public. Comments were received. And then the board took action on May 29 at a regular public board meeting. By my count, and please verify from what I've submitted to you, there were at least 30 communications and in-person meetings that occurred between the district and city staff, starting in October 2018. Also included in this chronology are five public board meetings, to which additional public input was received. The district held a meeting at the school site. Before it held the meeting, it went to the city and said, "Please give us the notices of all the residents who reside within 500 feet of the school." The school, as you know, has cliff and it has choir, and it has Irvine, and it has St. Andrews. 500 feet of that. 10 people showed up at the meeting, including one member from your city staff. So contrary to what we hear, contrary to what we hear about transparency and lack of transparency, I'm sure you hear that all the time. But when you hear from staff, you realize that because of the Brown Act, because of your commitment to the public, things are very transparent, and there is much opportunity. But balanced with the need to have this project go forward, we have also included the fact we retain an outside expert. His credentials are attached to our letter, who validated our plan. And with that, and due to the amount of time we are in, I'm going to ask Mrs. Flohr to come forward and briefly address the board as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair Flohr.
Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill, and council members Avery, Brenner, Dixon, Duffield, Hurdman, and Muldoon, City Manager Leon, and staff. My name is Martha Flohr, and I have been a continuous resident of the Newport Beach area since 1983. We welcome the opportunity to be here today on behalf of the Board of Education and the Newport Mesa Unified School District to present our position in regards to the encroachment permit. I was first elected to the board in 1991, and throughout my tenure on the board, we have had a great collaborative working relationship with the city and the district. One aspect of this relationship that is vital to the district's vision of safety and security for our students is our partnership with the Newport Beach Police Department and the School Resource Officer Program. We are grateful to this city council for its continued commitment to share in the funding of three resource officers. The design of Ensign Intermediate School is reflective of an era before school safety even became an issue of paramount concern to school boards and parents and staff. Past and current school board members have taken school safety, student safety, very seriously. For example, we shared with you the Newport Mesa Safety Update, presented to the board on August 27, 2019. And that's attachment one to the district's presentation. That safety update on page six includes three key components: emergency preparedness, building security, and community engagement. Under the building security, it was important that there be secured entry access for all our buildings and our classrooms. The project at Ensign School, as well as the updates to the Corona Del Mar, are part of a phased program on the district's safety and security program. And this began way back when we were discussing Anderson was the first. Anderson and Adams schools were the first two that we had conversations about and put in fencing and security. We have also provided you with a letter from the president of the Ensign School Site Council, who is a parent of a student at Ensign. That letter is submitted as attachment three, page 30. The letter concludes with the following statement: "In conclusion, the Ensign SSC has gone through a two-year process of learning about the project, providing input, and ultimately endorsing this project as what is best for our students and our school." I would also like to read to you from an email I recently received regarding this project. Quote, "You should go ahead with your project to improve the pickup/dropoff area of, for Ensign School along Cliff Drive. Your plan has the best protection for students vis-à-vis the traffic on Cliff Drive. The city's idea of double parking to let kids out is not safe. Okay, maybe for adults, but not kids. People wouldn't drop their kids off at an airport dropoff area by themselves, so it doesn't follow that it's a good solution for schools. Note that many, if not all, of the private schools in the area all have street pickup and dropoff. I think you are right on using, right track on using this model." Nelson Mandela said, "Safety and security don't just happen. They are the result of collective consensus and public investment. We owe our children, the most vulnerable citizens in our society, a life free of violence and fear. In conclusion, the Board of Education urges you to uphold the Public Works Director's decision to issue the encroachment permit on behalf of the Newport Mesa Unified School District." Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Mayor O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam President. So if we have questions, we can ask them now. We can wait until after public comment. Okay. We'll wait until after public comments. So I'm going to open up public comments. I'm also going to come, would you mind moving that just right back over where it was, so I can take? Thank you very much. Yeah, I just need a clean line of sight there.
Just briefly, before we go to public comment, if we're going to disclose those ex parte communications, probably best to do that before public comment.
Good call. I appreciate that. So because of the, because of the nature of the appeal, I thought it makes sense to disclose ex parte communications. I'll go first. So I, before, before the approval, I had a meeting with President Flohr, Vice President Yelsey, and Superintendent Navarro. In the last week, I have spoken also to Ms. Yelsey, and I have spoken to Ms. Barfield. And then very briefly, as I was walking in with Mr. Greer. I think that's the extent of my communications. So we'll just go down the line. So I'll start with Mr. Hurdman. Yeah, none. Okay. Mr. Duffield. All right, Ms. Dixon.
Ms. Barfield.
All right. Ms. Brenner.
I feel like I've talked to everybody in Newport Beach about this project, not only in the market, but in Starbucks and everywhere else. I'm going to name the ones I can remember and have had a little bit more conversation with, which was, I've talked to or met with members of the board, Flohr, Yelsey, Black, Anderson, Stokes, and Medior. I've spoken with Greer, Barfield, Nancy Scarborough, Charles Klob, a couple of other people whose names I can't remember, but I can let you know later.
That's okay. I think we got the gist on that one. Mr. Avery.
Along with Councilmember Brenner, I attended several meetings with Dr. Navarro, Ms. Flohr, Yelsey, and Black.
Okay. All right. So with that, we'll go out to public comment. So just a quick reminder, we're going to stick to three minutes. How are we doing on phone calls? None? All right. So what we're going, I expect that'll change, just to be clear. But I wanted to at least ask if we had a long queue. I'm going to stick to three minutes. What I'm going to do, just so, because they've requested it, and given the nature of the representation, I'm going to give six minutes to Ms. Barfield, although, fingers crossed, for five. And then I'm going to give five minutes to Mr. Greer, and fingers crossed, for four. So with everyone else, I'm going to stick to three minutes, and then we'll have an outer limit of one hour. With that, go ahead.
O'Neill and council members. I wake up in the morning, and I can't breathe.
Sorry, just one second. We need to fix the, so, okay. Could you stand close to the mic, and then we'll try it again?
Okay. Well, I can speak. You can't see me, but you can hear me. I wake up in the morning, and I can't breathe. All those trees that used to produce oxygen and clean the air are gone. And then all those birds that left the trees had to leave, but they left their nests with the baby birds or the eggs still in them. How sad. I didn't see one person out there trying to get rid of it. Now also, I went to Irvine School District, and I looked at where they had their banana drop off. None of them are anywhere near classrooms. All of these classrooms where the cars are going to be passing by are going to be filled with car fumes, bike fu, bus fumes, everything else. Isn't that a shame? Our children are going to breathe in all that crap. Also, the teachers will be breathing in all that crap. Nobody seems to care very much about that. If you look in Irvine, they don't have it anywhere near the classrooms. They're all next to the teacher's lounge, but that's what it is. Newport Beach hasn't thought this through. I would request that we rescind the curb ingress and egress until the community is in better understanding of what all is going on. And I might add that there is lots of property all around that they could have used. They didn't have to put it right in front of the classrooms. They could have put it somewhere else. Shame on them. Shame on them for taking the trees down, sneaking and taking the trees down. Shame on them. And yes, no one took a ladder to go over the fence to stop the, from doing what they had to do. Not one person. No lies. Thank you very much, Mayor O'Neill, for listening and City Council. And I hope that you all decide not to give them the curb that they need.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. We'll go to the next speaker, please.
Mayor O'Neill, council members, and staff. My name is Dennis Baker. Arrogance leads to bad optics, and I think maybe we have that situation here. I do understand that this is about the city's permit and the cutting. But the overall process was pretty bad. And the idea that we spawn, asked for a pause, and that triggered the destruction of the trees and the very quick action to basically, I don't know whether they thought that was going to mute it. We were concerned and are concerned about the whole process. And indeed, even though this is not about the project per se, this is tied to the project, this process. So I think that is important, and I appreciate yours and the council's indulgence to discuss this beyond just the city permit. And thank you for allowing our representative, Phil Greer, a little extra time to go through his stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm Kristin Petros of Holly Lane. I'm probably outside that 500-foot area where notices were sent. But this has been my neighborhood for almost my whole life. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the encroachment permit. Thank you, Mayor Protem Avery, for calling this up. As you know, a number of large, majestic, mature trees have been removed along Cliff Drive a few days ago. I witnessed this and was aghast that Newport Mesa School District would do this prior to further discussions on the matter with the city and the neighbors. The following issues directly relate to condition number three for approval of the encroachment permit, which affects the health and welfare of the public. The trees provided screening of the old school buildings, a beautiful street scene, habitat for the birds that are still hovering over the chopped trees, and much-needed shade for the campus and the children and teachers who use it. Side note, there is, there are rules that relate to removal of trees from April 1st to September 1st. It's the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. So I don't think the police department would probably know about that. So yes, there has been an egregious error in taking those trees down at this time of year. Knowing that there were alternatives presented to the district for the driveway and circulation improvements that did not remove these onsite mature trees and that the district ignored them is incredibly disappointing. I would suggest the city rescind the encroachment permit until it condition it as follows, or at least request the school board to implement these. I have sent this list to the council earlier today, but I'll read them quickly. That no new cassia trees, the orange-flowering trees, shall be removed. All trees removed, both onsite and street trees, shall be replaced with 36-inch box trees approved by the city prior to installation at a two-to-one ratio. The two-to-one ratio is more than what the district is asking for. These trees are specimen trees. They're huge. And that typically requires a more-than-one-to-one ratio replacement. Number three, trees shall be replaced primarily onsite and in the near vicinity if all cannot fit onsite. And lastly, trees shall be of a type that provides shade and shall be approved by the city of Newport Beach prior to installation. The reason for this is that palm trees, as shown in the board that I saw in front of the school, do not provide shade or much habitat at all. So shade trees should be part of that. I have a short sequoia- I have a short sequoia discussion. The city's... You have my comments on the sequoia discussion. Um, I hope you take a look. Thank you so much.
We do. Thank you very much. All right, we'll go next speaker, please.
Hello, everyone. I'm Nancy Barfield. And, uh, I do have a PowerPoint presentation. And I'm not gonna read all of it, but there's some highlights that I would like everyone to see. And at the very end, there's, um, two videos of the police officers engaging in a conversation with the Pinner construction crew, which was pretty shocking. Uh, the whole day was shocking. I was there for about nine-and-a-half hours. Everyone was under control. There was nobody in the school. How that rumor got started, I have no clue. If somebody started getting out of control, or I felt they were, I would say something, or I'd go to the police officer. He would say, "There's freedom of speech. They can talk." Uh, the rudeness from the workers and the arrogance was just appalling. And, um, to get started with my PowerPoint, I feel that there was a lot of non-transparency by the board. Um, there wasn't any really community relationship. Their famous meeting that they had with 10 people, I live two houses from Cliff Drive. I never received a card. I asked everyone in the entire neighborhood if they received a notice that there was going to be a, uh, meeting, and no one knew. Supposedly, 10 people showed up. I've asked who those 10 people were, and I don't have an answer yet. Um, the majority of the, even the majority of our neighborhood doesn't know what's really going on. They said, "Oh, I thought they were tearing down the school." No, that's not what's happening. And so, I would try to explain to them what was happening. October 7th, the school board submitted an advertisement, and, uh, it talked about the security fence. And I wanna back up one second. Their original meeting, the postcard or whatever they said they sent out said, "Safety fencing project." That's not quite, "Oh, by the way, we're doing a banana at a parking lot." So, it wasn't until you started digging further or we found out what was really happening. And if you get to October 7th, it talks about the security fence for Enson and CDM. And if you get down further, it then says, um, "There'll be two parking lots and security features." Then, there was a board meeting that we all attended along with the students who had made pictures, uh, poster boards about saving the trees. I had, I have 1,100 signatures in a petition from those students that wanted to save the tree. One of the students drove by when the trees were being torn down today and called me over, and he says, "I signed a petition. Why are these trees being taken down? We want them for our school. We need them." I didn't have an answer. At that board meeting, Martha Flure, uh, decided to have two community meetings. Of course, the first one got canceled because of COVID, and, um, nothing more was said. And then, pretty soon, we had the thought exchange. The thought exchange was one of the worst bias, uh, I, I don't even know what you wanna call it, that I went through. And I probably put 20 topics in the thought exchange, and then I actually went through 300 people that put their information in a thought exchange. And yes, at the very end, it's always safety. But it doesn't say that the city's approval of what they wanna do wouldn't be safer. Um, I can see and I can tell you, but I'm not today going to tell you how many times or what's gonna happen with your project. And it won't be safe. And when it gets stopped up bef, because of somebody backing out or going in, it's, it's, it's not gonna work. There was multiple issues going on with the project recently with trees and no permits. And when I went to the commissioner meeting for Parks, Recreation, and Beaches, they talked about how many trees were ruined on the perimeter of the school. Well, when I watched them dig a trench and they were cutting the roots of the trees, I notified the city and said, "Is this what you want?" So, they came out. Arborists had to come out. Um, I believe it was the school board's arborist. And essentially, there's nine trees that have the potential of pa, dying. So, that was another concern. Um, on April 26th, I would, had a conversation with Dana Black. I asked about the project. She says, "No, they're not gonna vote on it." And then she says, "Let me call you back." Yes, they are gonna vote on it. So, even the school board member didn't know what was going on. Um, going along with that, with the plan from the city, they have the curb going back eight to 10 feet. And I did get the plan from the city. I didn't draw this plan up by myself. So, the school board, or, yeah, the board, when they put in their fencing and ta, took out our trees, they put the fencing within 10 feet of the classrooms. You have 11 doors, 35 kids, and they go in and out every hour. So, where's their social distancing? What happens if a shooter comes and decides to get even closer to the school? The city's plan is far superior because you're 38 feet back from, uh, the school classrooms. April 28th, they had a virtual board meeting. Um, from there, I started comparing the plans from CDM because Aura keeps bragging about what a great banana she has. Well, there's no comparison between Enson and CDM's bananas and parking lots. Uh, there is a grandma that's in this meeting that was stuck for 45 minutes in the banana and couldn't get out because of the traffic backup. The city's plan is much safer, does not have possible circulation issues like the boards. And is that my three or my five?
That was actually your six.
Oh.
Um, I'll tell you what. If you, if you, uh, can go very, very, very quickly and then start the videos, we'll be in, we'll be all right.
Okay. Anyway, it's much safer. Um, I told you about that. I, I won't go through the thought exchange. In the, in, or in the Zoom meeting, there was 94 questions from the audience, and we had 20 minutes to send in our questions and get answered, and Aura spoke through the entire meeting. Then, on June 2nd, we went to the Beaches Recreation Commission's. They were appalled what was going on, and then they were going to investigate. And right afterwards, Laura Detwiler said, "Oh, by the way, this, the board has already voted, and they're going forward." The city was blindsided. That's their exact, um, statement of what was going on. And then, Aura was supposed to submit the new encroachment. The contractor's been using, not getting permits for proper outside city property that they were supposed to get. And, um, on the other note, there was tanks that were pulled up and taken away. I have not seen or heard of an environmental report on, on the soils. And in those, uh, tanks was gas, diesel, and oil. And now, you can start the pictures, um, starting with June 22nd. And it's the befores. There we go. And then, you have the demolition claw coming in. As I was walking around the school taking pictures, I heard one of the workers, I said, "What are you doing?" And they go, "We're doing a curb cut." I go, "Really?" So, then, I called over. No curb cut. Um, and then they said, "Well, we gotta get the, the machines here to get the trees down faster before the injunction gets filed. We gotta hurry up. And what we don't get today will ruin for tomorrow, so that it'll come down and they won't come back." The injunction was filed the next day, and the destruction had already begun. The workers were taunting the people. They were rude. They, somebody says, "Don't take down the tree in front of the teachers." And he says, "I'll take that one down faster." And he went and got a chainsaw and took it down. Then, I said, "There's a nest in the one to the left." He goes, "Good. I'll take that one down even faster." Um, i- it was the most traumatic day for a lot of us. And I would like you to now show the video of the police officers when the animal control came and said, "This is a possible crime scene. I need to come inside." And she was in an argument or a discussion with the crew. They were very rude to her. So, disrespect they have for the city of Newport Beach i- is, uh, mind-boggling. And then, the second video is of the officer telling the, whoever he was, another one from the Pinner crew, uh, telling him what was going on. And if you turn up the volume, you'll be able to hear the sounds. This is the second one. The other one, um, is when the animal control is inside. Can you hear it? What they're saying is the police officer is saying that they have a right to be in there because it is a possible crime scene. And if there was a murder, then they could go in there also. Um...
Nancy, it's okay, we can hear.
Can you hear it?
I understand you asked and requested it. Now, if you get cancelment, the councilman and the chief of police and everybody else involved, my chief tells me, "No," different story.
Okay.
But as of right now, the command staff that's at the station now, who I just spoke with, so we're gonna make sure these guys do what they need to do and find out, find out, and they find what they were looking for.
Looking for.
As far as protecting birds that are protected.
Right.
Then, we'll, we'll have another conversation. If not, you guys will be able to continue doing what you need to do.
Sure.
Absolutely.
And do you have his name?
I don't.
If you want, you can move to the second one. That was the police officer trying to tell to the gentleman that they had the right. The other, do you have the other one? The other video?
Yeah, just a moment.
And this is where they're arguing with animal control and started up their machine in the middle of it. I, that wasn't captured on this film, but you will hear what goes on.
It's an active construction site, so we're gonna have to ask you to leave and step outside of the park right away. You don't have jurisdiction here. This is, uh, state property. They don't have jurisdiction here. No, this is the state of California.
While the officer was in there, they started up the machine again. Everyone was yelling that house, and they had to stop. So, that's the summary of how it went on Monday. And it wasn't very nice, and it was terrible to the community. People can't even walk by anymore. The kids are devastated. The community's devastated. You would think the Board of Education would have a better relationship with the community. And, um, I say, "Don't allow the encroachment. Let's take a break. We need not to spend the money at this point anyway." If you look at Capistrano, they're firing.
Nancy, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, do we have any other speakers on this? If you're, uh, if you're planning on speaking, could you just kinda raise your hand so I see how many more, I think? All right, I see two.
That's six.
Oh, six. Okay. All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and members of the council. My name's Nancy Scarborough. There is a short 40-second video called "Labelled Enson" uh, with my name on it. Is that available? Thank you. Um, I attended Monday's devastation. I was there all day long. It was a very long day, exhausting. First of all, I would like to thank Chief Lewis and Sergeant Oberon for their professional and calm management of that day. The people who were there, we'll call them protesters, were, um, not out of control in any way, but the situation was very emotional for a lot of people, and it could've gotten nasty. There were exchanges of words, nothing threatening, but people were clearly emotionally upset. This was tragic. The bad behavior of Newport Beach or Newport Mesa School District is, has been ongoing for years. We've all been aware of it. They would have you believe that they had extensive outreach to the community. That's not true. The, um, previous speakers have, have pointed out certain examples of that. The people that were there on Monday, many of them didn't have any idea what was going on. They all lived in the area. They were students, they were parents or grandparents, children. They were crying, they were pleading with the workers to stop this destruction, and nothing happened, nothing, nothing changed. Um, I was there most of the day and witnessed this. There is an alternate plan that has been submitted, and I think that, that deserves some more consideration and discussion with the district. People pleading with the workers to stop. The community is now pleading with you, our council, our representatives, to do something, anything, to pause this project so that we have an opportunity to review it with the district and come up with something that makes everyone happy. So far, the community has been left out of all of these discussions. Their community input has been completely ignored by the district. And, um, we're pleading with you, our representatives, to help us make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you for holding this meeting. It's very important. I just wanna say, in front of Forest Enson, there is a design of the parking, of, of the school, but it does not include the parking, uh, structure of the banana parking lot. And may I remind the Newport Mesa School Board, this, we are paying you. These are our tax-paying dollars. And this was very underhanded to go in there and to take down these trees. These were living monuments. We have an, an undercurrent of an agenda that is being served up on a ladder, whether you like it or not. These were living monuments, and there's something going on in our country, and these guys are behind it. So, I ask you and the city to look at the alternative plan and stop the destruction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, good afternoon. Um, we're the McKennys. Austin, Stella, and Tricia McKenney. And we live in Cliff Haven. And one of the reasons why we've picked this community is because of the trees. It's really unique to our area. I don't think any other neighborhoods have the uniqueness of it. And Monday, when we did see the destruction, we had heard that they were gonna try to save the trees 'cause I do believe in children's safety and on, and everything we can do to protect our kids. But I think the trees are a big part of our community, so what we can do to save them would be awesome because it was really sad to see the birds and everything. They're still flying around looking for where to go. And I had brought Stella and Austin, my two children, to see if they wanna say anything.
Hi, um, my name is Stella McKenney, and I would like to say how sad I am about how the trees are getting cut down and about how all the birds are fluttering around 'cause they don't have any homes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome to City Council.
Hi, my name is Mary DiDomenico, and I'm a little bit nervous, so excuse me. I've lived in this neighborhood for 20-plus years, and I am simply astonished at some of the actions by the school board on multiple levels. There seems to be a history and a pattern of not listening to the people in the community and doing what they deem is necessary according to their own agenda. We all in the community, myself and others that are here today, fammed out about this plan via the City Council meeting on January the 28th of this last year. Numerous individuals attended the board meeting on the 11th of February, which was videotaped. At that board meeting, I was appalled to find out that one of the board members didn't even have the plan designs and was expected to vote without even having the plan designs in front of her. I was astonished that the principal of Enson did not reach out when he was asked by a board member to his PTA or to his parent groups. It is laughable to me. I am part of many, many mom groups in the community that the parents even know about this, and that letter that was presented by the student city council or whatever that John had is very inaccurate. There are many moms with students of all ages that are devastated at what is taking place, and they're questioning why, and so am I. Why is it that this is happening? We have a very fragile neighborhood. There's an ecosystem to this neighborhood, and that ecosystem is being diminished slowly, but surely. We are trying to fit a square into a circle. There's simply too many students at these three schools that are so close to each other. That's another topic. On Monday, I was there on and off, and I was heartbroken. There are two things that stood out to me on Monday. One was the birds. So I contacted my arborist, and he couldn't believe what he was hearing. As a matter of fact, he sent to me something off of your website, City of Newport Beach, which states there that a tree cannot be taken down if there's proof of nesting. It's a federal law. He also did tell me that somebody recently in Newport Beach had taken down a tree that had nesting in it, and he got to go to jail for an entire month and had to pay a $20,000 fine. So I can't believe that there wasn't any kind of work that was done to prevent any of this from happening. The other thing that stood out was, is while we were taking pictures and trying to grasp what was happening, I happened to erroneously record a conversation that existed between the police officer and one of the workers there. And the worker had told the police officer.
If you can wrap up, that'd be great.
Thank you. That Tim, excuse me, Mr. Holcomb is the, quote, "top dog, watchdog," that they have his cell phone number, and what he says goes. These trees have value, and I'm working with an arborist currently to find out what the monetary loss is of the trees that they had taken down. Please, please, please try to help us and our community. We are just absolutely, I'm very angry, and we're absolutely devastated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, council persons. My name is Bill Dunlap. I think you know who I am. I guess the thing that really concerns me, other than what happened on the ground on Monday, is the breakdown of the communication between the school board and city council. I thought we had a relationship with them, and they had one with us, based on trust and based on longstanding work within our city and the communication that should have taken place. So as an ex-planning commissioner, I'm embarrassed that our city has had the wool pulled over our eyes by the school district. I thought we all could do better than this. Certainly not putting any responsibility on blame on you, but it looks like really bad form in that you guys have been basically boondoggled. They were supposed to look at the alternate plan. There was discussions. You guys were supportive of the alternate plan, and then they, in the 11th hour, decide to pull the trees out, understanding that we were going to do the injunction. And it's just like a full disregard for your authority as council people. Now, I totally understand the school district has a right to get permits and do certain work, depending on whether it's in the public right of way or not, and that's all the technical end of it. But we've had a relationship with that school board, and now for them to just disregard your concerns, which are our concerns, is devastating and quite bewildering. And so that's the deeper issue here, that we have a rogue school board that doesn't even consider your opinions, let alone ours. So that's a big issue. Obviously, we need to change the school board out. The fact that they do not have term limits is devastating. For those people to be there that long is like they're omnipotent and they don't give a damn. So we're going to work on that, obviously, and clean that slate out. But you people are accountable too, because we relied on you for the relationship because it's longstanding. So I'm just bewildered what's happened. So I'll be talking to you, a lot of you personally, because this is quite devastating. Because this is, is this the beginning? Is this where they're going to just do what they want to do regardless of community input? So thank you for your time, and I hope you show and feel the same concerns we do.
Thanks, Bill. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Charles Klob. So as Dennis Baker so eloquently said at the very last year, "The optics are bad." There's certainly some smoke. I know you have to make a finding today to perfect this. The school board made a finding that the project was exempt from CEQA because there was no environmental damage. Clearly, there was no environmental damage. So I pray that you are white knights tonight and that you stop this, slow this down, and give us some time to get this back to a discussion that can be acceptable and safe for everybody. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill and members of the council. My name is Nancy Skinner. I do not live in the area where this occurred. I live in West Cliff. My children rode their bikes to Enson every day when they were in school. I've lived here a long time. But I am mostly concerned how devastated we all are. I happened to be driving on Cliff Drive that day to go to the beach, and when I came back from the beach, it was just unbelievable, both times, both ways. And what I'm really thinking is, what kind of a message is our school board giving to our schoolchildren? Where's that civics lesson that they should have, we need in this country more than anything, I think, these days? Is a good civics lesson, and I would hope that perhaps what you can do to help solve this tonight, or this afternoon, is to turn down that temporary or that, allow an encroachment permit and withdraw it. So that what we're asking for is a way to heal, and I don't know any other way to do it, other than to have a pause and to give us some time to talk. I believe in talking, and I don't know what else to do at this point with the trees, but it was just the most, probably one of the saddest days of my life, to drive by and see what was going on and to realize that they did this on purpose, to try to do it as fast as they could so that there wouldn't be a chance to talk. Please do that for our community, and you will be my heroes. Thank you.
Thank you. I know it's out of habit, Nancy, but you're touching the mic so much. If you have hand sanitizer in there, make sure you give it to Nancy. Not for the mic itself, for Nancy. If you don't, I do. All right. Keep protecting our residents. All right, so any other public comments? Do we have any calls? Oh, hi, Phil. You snuck in, huh? All right. All right, last public comment will be Phil Greer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This process has been littered with examples of the school district's bad faith. I would like to touch on just one of them real quickly. As Mr. O'Neill knows, as Mr. Harp knows, when you go in for an ex-party application, you have to provide 24 hours' notice. We did that Monday morning at 9:00. By 11:00 that Monday morning, the heavy equipment was out there, and they knew we couldn't do anything about it because we had an obligation under the law to go and follow a process. At the end of that day, on Monday, the crews out there were chopping branches off of trees, scarring trunks, and doing other things to ensure that none of those trees would survive and that the trees that they could not get to at that time would be gotten to the next morning because they could not survive. This is nothing but bad faith. It was willful, it was malicious, and it was designed to get what they wanted, knowing that the community did not want it and knowing that the community was going in and trying to do something about it pursuant to the law. The bad faith of the district is immense, it's all-encompassing, and I think you've heard from a variety of people up here how they haven't talked to the community, how they've misrepresented what they're doing to the community, and how they are just trying to bully and bulldoze this process. Councilmember Dixon is absolutely right. There are laws on the books about trees. Government Code Section 53067 provides that trees are an important part of the community and should not be touched without proper and appropriate actions. These actions were not taken. There was no study done by an arborist, there was no study done by a wildlife professional to determine what those trees held. Did they hold nests? Did they hold birds? I mean, as Ms. Brenner has pointed out, the birds are still circling where the trees were, looking for their homes, looking for their nests. This is an abomination. Government Code, California Civil Code Section 3346 provides for treble damages against anyone who intentionally or maliciously destroys a tree. The school district is owned by the citizens ultimately. We're the taxpayers, and they destroyed our trees. And they did it maliciously because they knew we were going in to get an injunction. And they did it willfully, knowing that we were going in to get an injunction. An injunction, I might add, that the court did grant us. We were able to get an injunction stopping it, but because of the actions of the district, we were unable to protect those trees. So again, it was willful and it was malicious. California Civil Code of Civil Procedure 732 and 733 also reiterates that the penalties are treble damages. And I can represent to this council and to this community that my client, SPON, will be seeking treble damages, not only from the district, but from the two contractors that were involved in this fiasco, because they also knew that they should not chop those trees down, and they maliciously and willfully went forward and did it. The videotapes that you've seen, the testimony by other people clearly shows that this is what happened, and SPON is going to go after them. You talk about communication. There's one piece of communication that the district is really trying to avoid. There's an email from James Houlihan dated June 3, 2020, and it says, it's to Nancy Barfield, and it says, "Nancy, the city and I were blindsided, as you were. I had checked last week and confirmed that the next meeting would be on June 9. I didn't see this coming. I was actually preparing a formal presentation on behalf of the city for the board to consider." And so what did the board do? The board snuck in the middle of night in May and had a meeting. They blindsided the city, they blindsided the community, they blindsided the teachers and parents of that school district. The question really is, what can we do about this? And I think there are three things that we can do. First, this council can deny the application for the encroachment permit. That will stop them to a degree. It will not stop them entirely because they are sneaking around the back and using other gates and things of that nature, but it will slow them down and will protect the rest of the trees that are up there on the front. And it will also allow the community, both through SPON, through the city council, and through members of this community, to hopefully have a conversation that's not one-sided, that's not biased.
Go ahead with your last two.
The second, I would take a look at all remaining permits that are out there that the city might have granted to them to, in fact, continue this to go on. And third, and I think this is the most important, I think the city should stop this project and review the CEQA application. If you look at the CEQA application, it's a self-generated document. It's the school district basically saying, "We don't think there's anything wrong, so we're going to go ahead and destroy the environment." There are 15 or 20 statements in the CEQA document that provide, I'm sorry, that contradict what they're saying here today. Talking about parking, talking about environmental impact, talking about the three things that we talked about now, the health, welfare and benefit of the community, talking about what happens when you remove that median in the center of Cliff Drive. There are a number of things that need to be done. We're going to be challenging those in court, but at the same time, anything the city can do to help us is important. It's imperative. If you listen to all these people, other than their attorney and their president of their board, nobody has stood up and said, "We like this new project. We like the fact that there are no trees there. We like the fact that they lied to us and they did all these other things to us." So I'm asking you, on behalf of SPON, on behalf of the community, to A, deny the permit, and B, take a look at the CEQA application that they self-generated and challenge it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Greer. Okay. I think that wraps up public comment. Did we have any calls on this one? No. All right. Last call? All right. Thank you. So we're going to bring it back. The district, if you'd like five minutes, you're welcome to them. Absolutely. Why don't we use that one again if you wouldn't mind?
There's been a lot of emotion here.
Oh, sorry. Just one second. That was very quick. Okay.
There's been a lot of emotion here, and I deeply appreciate that emotion. But I think you have to sit back and think of the safety and security of those children. Yes, they're trees. As far as the government code section, it doesn't apply on our property. It's very important for us to remember that. We should not get caught up in the fact, but if we want a way, trees and children and staff, let's think about that in the balance. When you hear that this project is not supported by staff or community, of course, that is belied by the fact that the school-side council has unanimously come out in favor and been involved in this project for two years. You've also heard briefly a statement, "Well, we think the city's plan is safer." Well, in all due respect, none of those people are traffic engineers. They have spent a lot of time on this project and have a lot of emotion involved in this project, but they are not a traffic engineer. Who are the traffic engineers? They are on your staff, and it is your staff that has found that our project is safe. It is also the state of California that has approved our project through a very rigorous permit process known as the Office of State Architect. We should not delay this project. We should affirmatively vote so that this permit can proceed accordingly. Only by doing that will we be able to complete this project before the start of school. Remember, lots of time there are interests that conflict, but ultimately, it is the school board that is charged with the responsibility of the safety of children. That is why we have had this ongoing safety reports, ongoing public meetings, ongoing board meetings, and for some, quite And for some, quite frankly, to say there's a lack of good faith is an emotional conclusion. But when we provide you a four-page chronology of meetings, we cannot say that there's not a communication, that the district is acting in bad faith. So I respectfully request that the city staffs department be upheld. And finally, I will say this with respect to the birds. Talk about drawing a bird out of a hat. We had environmental reviews. This project has been up and considered and been before you all. It could have been when this matter was back before you all at a board meeting. Somebody could have said, well, what about those trees? But nobody has raised the bird issue until literally the 12th hour. Please don't get caught up in birds and put children in the forefront. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we have, are you going to be asking questions before we go down? I've got three councilmembers in, and I just want to find out, are you going to be asking questions of the district, Mr. Hurdman?
You're asking my questions, too. To be honest with you, I'm a little confused about what's going on here, to be quite honest with you.
Do you mind if I ask a couple of clarifying questions real quick before, okay?
Might help me.
Maybe, I'm not sure. So a couple of quick questions for Mr. Harp. So we are, first, I want to talk about the piece of litigation that Mr. Greer was referencing. So there's been a lawsuit filed against the school district. The city of Newport Beach is a named defendant in that lawsuit. And they granted a temporary restraining order. I was curious, have you seen the court's order?
I have not, and we have not been served with a copy of that complaint.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood that then. We are not a named party. Okay. Do you have a copy with you available? Just for the record, I'm speaking with Mr. Greer.
Maybe the important issue, Mr. Greer, is that?
Bill, why don't you come on up to the mic if you wouldn't mind for just a second? I was just kind of, I'd like to just understand the scope of what we're dealing with on that front, too, and then we'll come back to the permit issue. But I'd just like to make sure I understand what's going on there.
We did not name the city of Newport Beach as a defendant in the action. So therefore, we didn't give them notice or do anything else. I do have, I believe...
When is the hearing on the preliminary injunction?
Monday.
Okay.
Monday. I do have a copy of the order.
Okay. Okay. All right. And so until Monday, the, is this, so I'll tell you what, why don't you take a look at that? Is this, could you read it? I'm just kind of curious what it says, because it looks pretty short, the meat of it at least, what the actual order is.
It says the temporary restraining order is granted as any trees not removed. If all trees have been removed, matter is moot. I haven't seen if there's an actual executed temporary restraining order. Would that impact anything that we're considering here today?
That's the exact order.
Okay. So no trees will be removed between now and Monday? Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. That clarifies a couple of things. I was kind of curious about the scope of the restraining order as well as, I was under the misunderstanding that we were a named party. Okay. All right, Mr. Hurdman.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. So we're here today in a hearing. And if I understood the opening of this hearing today, we're to make a determination based on the evidence and the facts presented as to whether or not we are going to repeal or pull back the encroachment permit that we approved. And in order to do that, to make a decision on that, there's four things that we have to determine. Evidence that pedestrian...
Sorry, can you just wait? Could you, could we bring back up Mr. Houlihan's PowerPoint presentation? That's okay. Could we bring back up Mr. Houlihan's PowerPoint presentation and go to the exact slide discussing the legal standards that Mr. Hurdman's talking about? That might help. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hurdman.
Okay, we've got to find that pedestrian and vehicular traffic is unreasonably interfered with this plan, number one. We have to determine whether it is in line with council policy L2. I do have a question about that. I guess I would be asking it to Public Works, to Grace, I'm not real sure. The question is, are the driveways, the two driveways that are proposed at an 8% or less maximum slope? Do we know the answer to that question?
Yes, neither, they are curb-cut driveways, so they are, they can go to 10%.
And are they less than 10%?
They're within our standard, yeah.
Okay, thank you. The third criteria is if this project interferes with the demand for parking. Nobody's answered that question yet for me. And means of entering and exiting the property. I'd like a response to that, please.
Okay. And as it refers to the demand for parking, what we're looking at is what the existing condition is today in terms of traffic on Cliff Drive and what it has been typically when school's in session. And we know that during the peak periods in the, typically in the pickup and drop-off, there's double parking occurring, there's a lot of congestion. And that's not necessarily going to change with this project per se. Probably the one thing that will be the biggest change from a traffic perspective is the change that the school district's making by making the single point of entry for the project being on Cliff Drive. So now for a lot of the parents that want to drop off their children or pick their children up, if they want to be closer to the front and the single point of entry, you'll probably see more traffic on Cliff Drive as part of that.
These are strictly drop-off and pickup lanes.
Right.
No parking, no parking.
And the parking is, it's tied to the project from the standpoint of if there's traffic occurring and there's double parking, and there has been traditionally on Cliff Drive, if there's now an off-street parking provided, then that would take some of that load off of Cliff Drive.
Okay, thank you, Jim. And then health and welfare, is it publicly, is it significantly affected? The health and welfare of public and kids? That's the fourth thing that we would have to find. I'm assuming that the word welfare means safety in this case. There's been a lot of testimony today, a lot of comments today having to do with the affect of this project, with the environment, with the neighborhood and that type of thing. But when it comes right down to what we're here for today, we have to make a determination about these four key things in our findings as to whether or not we revoke this encroachment permit that has been granted already. I, as far as us stopping this project as a body, to me, it's really up to the school district based on what they have heard today from the public to stop this project. They've talked about the urgency of having to get this done because staff returns mid-August, yet we have not, the public has not heard any plans about the startup of school, when it is going to start, what the plan is for the start of school. So this justifying the urgency of this project based on the return of staff just doesn't fly with me at this point in time. We don't even know what school's going to look like, and we don't even know when it's going to start. I'm just about finished, but council policy L2 is not being violated. They're in compliance. Interfering with the demand for parking. I just heard an explanation from Tony about, hopefully, the double parking problem may be alleviated with two lanes for drop-off and pickup. Health, welfare, safety, is it being significantly affected by this project? Certainly not, in my opinion. And evidence that pedestrian and vehicular traffic is unreasonably interfered with. Certainly doesn't sound like it. To me, this sounds like a solution to try and solve any kind of a problem like that that Enson has been experiencing. So I don't want the public to think that I am, that I am not sympathetic to everything, literally everything that was said today regarding this project, the way it's been approached. But when it comes right down to us, those of us who are sitting here today have to base our decision on those four things, okay? And everything else has to go away. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner, next.
I had a couple of questions and then a statement. Can someone tell me who the contractors are that did this work? And do they just work for the district, or do they work for other municipalities?
They are a listed contractor and currently working for the city of Newport Beach. Telacoo is their name, and they were the low responsible bidder and awarded the project by the school district. I can also answer when school will start as well, but I wasn't, I crossed that out in my presentation because staff was coming sooner.
Go ahead, answer that. We want all the facts on the table.
It's important that you get all the facts in front of you. Monday, August 24, students will return to Enson. Staff comes in the previous Wednesday.
Great. I have one other question. I don't know if it would be from you or Dr. Navarro or Martha, whoever wants to answer it. But I heard something interesting in one of our meetings about the formula for determining how much parking there is at each, at each school. I'd like to, I'd like for the public to know the answer to that, because it really surprised me.
Yeah, I think that's very good, because there's, you know, parking also going on in other spots. But wherever you park, you will have to go in and through the front of the school. And Mr. Holcomb is here, and he can address that remark, as well as our architect is here.
Because that was really surprising to me about the different levels and the amount of parking required at each type of school.
It was surprising to me to know during the course of the school day, we're not only talking about kids coming to school, teachers coming to school at seven in the morning, but there's a whole series of staff that comes in and out of that school for special ed, for speech therapists, for parents who come and visit. And there needs to be parking for those people, and that's recognized by the state. But I'm not an architect, and I'll turn that over to Mr. Holcomb.
Let me just tell you what my understanding was, and you can tell me if that was true. Because I, the question I asked was, are there different formulas for different levels? Elementary school, high school, and intermediate school? What I believe I heard at the meeting was that the formula is the same for every level of education and that you have to provide the same level of parking. The question came from parents who say, you know, you need a lot of parking at the high school and you need quite a bit of parking at the elementary school because you have a lot of parents coming in and out, and that they felt the least necessary was at the intermediate level. So would you just tell me if I'm correct in understanding that, or if there's something different?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brenner, and other council members and guests. My name's Tim Holcomb. I'm the Assistant Superintendent at the Newport Mesa Unified School District. And in answer to your question, the state standard does not deal with student parking at high schools. The state standard deals with the necessity to park the people that Mr. Covert mentioned, the teaching stations, the itinerant teachers and those folks. And that standard is 2.25 parking spaces per teaching station.
They don't, they don't account for students that drive? That's interesting.
That's actually an issue that is left to school districts to address on the basis of their local conditions and their own policies and standards.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that for other people. And I wanted to make a clarification to one thing that Mr. Covert said. You made a statement that said the trees on the property are the property of the school board. And I beg to differ, because that's like saying that the city of Newport Beach is our property because we're elected to represent Newport Beach. You know, our trees in our city belong to our citizens. And I believe that the school money that is paid by our citizens that ultimately belongs to them and the school board represents them.
Are you asking?
Is that a question?
Hang on one second.
I beg your pardon.
Yep. Is that a question, or it's okay if it's not?
Well, it's actually not a question. It was like when you said that, it's like I went, wait, we don't own the city of Newport Beach. So I think that was just a little misstatement.
Well, it was in, well, may I?
No. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And then I just, I just need to get a few things off my chest here. So I think I'm the only person in this room that has a student at Enson and another one coming up to Enson. And I've been really bothered by the impression that we're not concerned about student safety. Because when, like, I don't want you to approve anything that's not safe for our students. And I think your survey that you put out really emphasized how important student safety was, and everybody agreed with that. It was almost like we didn't even need to ask those questions because safety is the number one priority for all of us. And we're not trying to get you to approve anything that would not be safe for all of our students. I think we are concerned about the actual safety of this single entrance. And we're worried about the traffic conditions that are going to be created at Cliff Drive and Irvine Avenue because of this. And I guess I was disappointed because I felt like we've got a lot of changes taking place now with the single entrance and with the COVID and all sorts of things. And it's like we're making this decision on the basis of the past and how it's been. And one thing was said about the site council, having looked at this for two years. The site council never looked at our plan. They never, this was done before our plan even came into existence. So I don't really think that's as big of a factor as it might be. And I've just been a little baffled. I came into this job, you know I'm newer than any of the rest of you, and I came into this job feeling like we were partners and we were all on the same page and we're going to be working with you and you're going to be working with us. And the other night, on Tuesday night at our council meeting, we had a couple of things. We approved the resources for your, the resource officers that we provide for the schools. And we also were approving funding for the Spirit Run, which provides money for our local schools. And I sat here thinking, that indicates we're partners. Like, we really want to feel like we're partners in this and that everything we do. And I feel like many of you are my friends. And so I just was a little, it seemed like this was more adversarial than I had expected it to be. And I know it might feel like we came into it at the last minute and we're trying to question your judgment. But, you know, we get questioned on our judgment all the time here. And sometimes our citizens have good points, that we actually do change our minds about things. So I was just very surprised about that. And I actually can't understand why the alternate proposal didn't seem to be discussed. I mean, it wasn't discussed, I, the mayor and Will and I, and Brad and I have been the members of the council that have met with several of you. And during these, what do we call those? The quarterly meetings that we're trying to start having with the district. And I really didn't feel like it was a give-and-take kind of conversation. And I do understand being defensive, because we, you know, we feel defensive sometimes about actions that we've taken. And so, but I don't think we came in trying to tell you how to do your job. I really just felt like, you know, this is a way that we can really be good partners and come up with something that might be best for everyone. But I was really disappointed on Monday. I have never seen anything like the brutality with which those contractors came in and destroyed those trees. It was, it was like... It was, it was like they were angry and attacking them. We have arborists, and they cut down trees all the time in Newport Beach, and they do it respectfully. I mean, they cut it down and there were no cuts. They were ripping those trees apart. And I, it was really, it made you angry if you saw it. And then watching the birds fly around and look for their homes, it was really depressing. And what I found myself thinking was that this is why people don't trust government these days. I always tell people that local government is where democracy works best. This is where you can elect people and you can see them at the market and you can talk to them and you can make appointments with them, and you really know your elected officials at the local level. And I just felt like this is why people don't trust us, is because of the way that this was done. It really seemed malicious. And, you know, I know you teach our kids about saving the planet and the environment, and it's like that was our little rainforest. And it was attacked and it was brutally dismantled. And I don't know, I don't know who made the decision to do it that way, but it was very, very, very disappointing. And I also know that you are the people that we trust to teach our kids about civic involvement and the importance of civic involvement. And the fact that these kids tried to 1,100 sign the petition and that they really wanted a dialogue with you about, even if you had to tell them no, that was part of the learning process. And it could have been, it could have been a process that really helped them to understand how important it is to be involved. The message it felt like they were getting was, we don't value your opinion. You know, we, we just, and I don't know what your process is. I thought all of our processes were the same, but we sat through hours of testimony about the Marine Avenue trees when we were thinking of just taking down the diseased ones. And we ended up sending it back to our PBNR Commission and saying, look at this again. We had arborists after arborists talk about it. We did end up having to take some of those trees down, but it was so thoughtfully done. It was done, it was painful for us to do it because we've got tree people on our staff that love trees, and we're actually a tree city. We were designated a tree city back when I chaired the Parks Commission back in the 80s. And we went through the process to become a tree city, and our citizens love our trees. And I think you know that. If you didn't know it before, you certainly know it now. But that, it was just, the biggest shock about being in public office for me has been when we're powerless. And, you know, we may be powerless to stop anything else on this project, but I do think it's important that we are listening to everybody. We're giving the citizens a chance to hear our thought process, what we went through, what you went through. And, you know, I just think it's really unfortunate that it came down this way because it could have been an educational process and it could have been a much more collaborative process. And I just really feel sad about that. And I hope that in the future that we can really be partners in the city of Newport Beach and work together to look at all aspects of our city and our educational system and what's best for our parents and our kids. Thank you.
Mr. Avery.
So, are any more trees slated to come down in this process?
There are two trees right now that are still designated for demolition that have not been demolished at this point.
Where are they located?
They're located in the front of the school.
Those are the big ones?
There are two trees near the entry to the school that are still remaining for the contractor to complete.
And those are the very large trees that are out there in front?
Well, one is a large eucalyptus to the right, if you're standing looking at the entrance, and one is a similar tree to the trees that were in front of the classrooms that is to the left.
Right.
There are also two trees that are not, that are protected, and that's the memorial trees for Jose Gadebe.
Right.
Those two trees are protected and they won't be, they're staying there.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
And then, so what's the plan for new trees? I mean, seriously, is there, is there one?
Yes. So, the board took action to add to the plan. There was already an extensive landscape improvement project as part of this plan, both along Cliff Drive and along Irvine Drive. In addition to that, the board has asked to make sure that all trees are replaced one-for-one. And in addition to that, we have also offered to complete the Parkway planting of trees, where the city has trees along Cliff Drive, but those are incomplete. And we have proposed that at the district's cost, we would complete that Parkway planting.
Thank you.
Sorry, no, not on this one.
Yeah, I, just a couple of points I have is, I don't think this is zero-sum trees versus children's safety, you know? And there's so many things that we get flagged in front of us as people about, and so many things that have gone by the wayside because of safety. And I know, of course, it's the school board's responsibility, it's all of our responsibility in this town to protect children by the way we drive and our own actions and supporting institutions that do that, and it's just a process. So, I think we can just stop with the safety stuff, frankly. And I do think there's probably a way that could have been arrived at that would have saved the trees and still provided safety that was needed for the children. But that's just my opinion, and I'm not privy to the studies and all that the school district did. But the biggest thing is, I think there just should have been far more forwardness in this with the community. And, yeah, it is emotional, and we do get caught up in the emotion. And I've been in this chamber many times when we had a full house and it was emotional, and it makes a difference in the decisions we make. We do consider the emotions of our residents. We do consider their viewpoints, viewpoints that perhaps we didn't have until we got in the middle of a situation like this where people are coming forward and giving us their perspectives. The people actually live right next to wherever this action's happening. And, you know, we do change our minds, and we do try to find a way forward in working in partnership with our citizens. And we do this because we are charged to do this. It's what we said we would do when we ran for election. All of us say we're going to listen to people, and I know the board, school board, the same. And I was, I've always been struck, first few months on council, by how much we are affected by the people that come to our meetings and tell us a different perspective and tell us where they're coming from. And that's the way it should work. And I was surprised, frankly, by the actions taken on Monday because, I don't know, all the way along, I felt that we would arrive at something, a deal, some kind of, save the trees, or at the very least, sit down with people and work out, okay, these trees have got to come down, we're going to schedule for this day, and kind of work through the emotion and figure out a replacement plan that people might get behind. Some kind of, you know, something beyond what might normally be done in terms of the size of the trees going back. Maybe a plan looking to the future of making more of an urban forest in the, on the school property than what was previously planned. Because going forward, we're going to need more trees to help solve our issues with global warming and the environment, all of it. So, but at this point, I'd prefer to look forward, and I just think I would encourage the school district to do more because we can't do anything about what's happened. And I think the residents have shown how important the urban forest is to them throughout the Heights, West Cliff, and the whole city. So, it's just problematic when we start taking down multiple groups of trees. We have to have an awful good reason. And I guess the school, obviously, the school board felt they had a good reason. And I just wish that the citizens and frankly, some of us on council, you know, maybe we should have done more to try and push this issue and work more. But we also know that this is the school district's property, and I strongly feel that we get a lot of heat from our folks in the community, and rightly so, for various actions we take and for actions that we're planning to take. And I just think any board that's controlling large swaths of land and the futures of our futures, they need to feel the heat all the time. So, this, the folks that come to our meetings are taking time and they're representing many other people. And so, alls I can say is, it's really important to show up to meetings of not only council, of school boards, and any other body that is going to impact, you know, your life and our community. So, and I applaud those that do that. As difficult as it can be for all of us elected, it's the way it's supposed to work. So, I'll just finally say that I just hope that there's a robust plan in place to bring more trees in, and not only this campus but all the campuses. Why not, you know, do that? So, thank you.
Are you? Ms. Dixon.
Yes, it's probably, I can't add too much more than what my colleagues have spoken about, that I couldn't agree more. But I do want to ask a couple of technical questions and then I'll make a statement. Could someone tell me how many accidents, safety issues have occurred in this location in the last 10 years? Does anybody know? What's the safety, traffic safety data?
You know, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dixon, I don't have a number for that right now. If it was excessive, if it was something that we knew we had a strong history of accidents in that area, then I'd be able to say yes and point out, but it's not a significant number, and I don't have a number right now.
So, thank you, Mr. Bryan. So, I'm sorry. Okay, so, thank you.
Hang on one second, just because we're recording and I'm, I'm just going to say that Phil Greer stood up and said that there have been none between, from 2017 to now. I, you're killing me, Mr. Greer. So, yeah, I appreciate that. On something like that, we got to go with the city staff discussion, so go ahead.
Okay, that's fine. I guess I would ask from the school district, Mr. Holcomb, in citing as you have in, giving the city, I guess, is it only the city that would have the safety information? The city would not, they do, the purpose for this change into the parking and traffic is to enhance safety. So, tell me what the safety problem is that we're trying to fix. Who can answer that for me, please? Thank you, Mr. Navarro.
So, before we had to close our district in March because of the COVID-19 pandemic, our principal reported to us that the year before, the 1819 school year, we had nine students that were hit between Irvine and Coral, I mean, between Cliff and Coral and Irvine. Nine students that were hit that year. And this year before we closed, we had five more that were hit this year. So, this all happens on Irvine between Cliff and Coral. So, the design is to make, is to eliminate the traffic going onto Irvine and bringing it onto Cliff so that we don't have the altercations that we have between a vehicle and a student on a bike or a student walking. So, we've had 15 kids, 14 kids hit in the last year and a half when we were open.
In this precise area?
Yeah, on Irvine between Cliff and Coral. That's the trouble area for us.
There have been, it's hard to hear because of the mask.
14.
14 incidents?
Yes.
Safety infractions or vehicular accidents?
Students hit by car, either hard or knocked down, and we have, and our district has to keep all of the accident reports that we keep, not that the city keeps, that we have to forward to our liability carrier.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Well, you might have an answer to my next question. So, we're working on this safety, traffic safety improvement plan for a couple of years. Was this, did the school district consider, or the architect consider any other, I mean, how many acres is on this property? I mean, you've got several, two playing fields, etc. Was there any consideration of modifying the playing fields to put the parking away from Cliff Drive and inland on Coral, perhaps?
Well, I can't speak directly to the details, but I can tell you that, like any, everybody talks about transparency and collaboration. We include our staff when we talk about these designs, and it was clear that the learning areas for the physical education department would have been compromised any other way, and that staff wasn't in favor of that. So, that was part of what went in. But I would have to defer that to Mr. Holcomb or Mr. Zarezny to give you the details on it.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, that's fine. You could go back to your chair. That's fine. Thank you very much, sir. Birds and trees, bird nests. I mean, there's this state law, maybe a federal law, did you say? Was, well, Mr. Holcomb, could you tell me, was that considered in terms of this project that this number of trees would be cut down and that there was an arborist who identified how many nests there were in the tree and the type of birds? Was there an arborist analysis presented as part of this project? Can anybody answer that question for me, please? Thank you.
In reviewing the project, initially, there were no indications that there were any environmental impacts, which was the reason why the district proceeded with its notice of exemption.
Okay, but there were birds in the trees that we all, it seemed to have evidence that there were birds in the trees. And then, why, well, I guess maybe I'll answer this. So, the reason we're doing this now, or the school district is doing this now and has to be done quickly before August 24th, is because of these safety issues that have occurred? And so, that's the reason for the resident. Then to the comments that have been made, we don't even know if there's going to be school, going back to school on August 24th, given the COVID. I just have to, did you want to say something, Mr. Navarro?
School will start in some format on August 24th. I know that there's a big push from our community to open full-time person-to-person. We're trying to design our plans based on what the state guidance is. If we can go person-to-person, we'll open person, but we are opening on the 24th.
Okay, I just want to comment on something you just said. There is a desire by the community to open the school. Okay, this community, as we've been speaking this afternoon, cares very much about changes to the community, whether it's natural changes with trees, environmental changes, physical change, physical structures. This community, you've been here, how many years have you been in Newport Unified?
Oh, 12.
Okay, so you know this community. You know, as much as we know in terms of how, and this neighborhood especially, around schools, people, I mean, how many years have we been trying to figure out bike paths to the school? I mean, and we still are struggling with it. We, up here, take the concerns of residents, obviously, very seriously, and we listen and we go back to the drawing board and look again. I mean, as long as I've been on the council, we've been looking at bike paths through the school district, through the neighborhoods, and we still haven't come up with a perfect solution. And we had a tragic accident in the neighborhood, and we're still struggling with trying to deal with those issues. So, safety is obviously the number one issue, but I don't know if this is the only solution to this safety problem. I guess I would say, if you were, if you operated, the school board operated the same way we did, is can you go back and look at another plan and maybe come back with something else? But also, I want to just take exception to this property... But also, I want to just take exception to, this property belongs to the school district. It belongs to everyone in the public, it's public property, just as this property belongs to the taxpayers of Newport Beach. Now, maybe the school district and the state of California, that's your little island of protection against all other forms of government, but it's still, you're in service to the neighborhood immediately around you and to our community, and we're a very responsive community. So I'm troubled by kind of that arrogance that it's our way or the highway. And also, just to echo what Ms. Brenner said about the students, I, I guess my message to the students is that their petition, their voice matters, matters to us, matters to me, and that they hear from, that their city council has, were boxed in, because there's very little we can do, because it's just a technical approval of an encroachment that apparently has been done according to the rules. But I would like our students and our community to know that we have called a special meeting, the mayor's called a special meeting today of the city council on a matter that we have very small jurisdiction over, and we wanted to find a way to make it, make it come out differently. I think we're in a box, sad to say, but I want the parents and the people, the community members who are, who have come and who have written and who have been pleading for help to listen, to find another alternative, and now that alternative has been taken away because all the trees were chopped down. I can't even believe it. So, it's, I guess my message is that I'm very disappointed with the outcome today. We have very little options here, and when we come to making a decision, I'm going to suggest that we, whatever decision we make, it's to indicate our displeasure with prejudice of how this process was carried forward in disregarding the voices of the community in a full, full context of looking at different plans and different alternatives to protect our trees. So, thank you, Mr. Navarro, thank you.
I promise to work with Dr. Shaka on a message to his students regarding what you just said.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
I promise to work with Dr. Shaka on a message with his students regarding what you just said, okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
So, because Mr. Duffield hasn't spoken yet, I'll go with him, and then I'll go over to Mr. Hurdman.
Well, thank you, Mayor. This is just something to ponder. I went to, where, since then, 52 years ago, and we had a very large class, and, so I think the enrollment numbers are probably the same, but, but just, it's interesting to ask, so why is it dangerous now, and it wasn't dangerous when I went there? And so you're, you're going, 52 years later, you're going to fix it, you know, and it has to be fixed tomorrow. So you waited 52, you let me go there when it was dangerous, I, I don't, anyway, thank you.
We'll go to Mr. Hurdman, then I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to close it up.
Okay, I just have a few closing remarks. I want to preface everything, and I think you guys know I'm a retired educator. I retired in 2005, and about a month after my retirement, I received a phone call from the principal of Enson Intermediate School, asking me if I'd fill in for the remainder of the school year as an assistant principal, which I did. So I worked at Enson, all right? I'm very familiar with the campus, I'm very familiar with the school. I just think there has been so many public relations mistakes made throughout this entire process that could have been completely avoided, in addition to, which I know has nothing to do with this, a premature decision made by the superintendent on the way graduation was handled this year as well. I served as the assistant principal for five months at Enson. I supervised and observed instruction and learning, that was a big part of my responsibilities. That section of campus that is being physically affected by this plan, I observed as a significant, significant gathering spot for kids before and after school. Teachers use the area for instruction and as an extension of the classroom. The instructional program is going to be affected by this decision, and the instructional program should be the first concern of the board and of the superintendent. The issues here have little or nothing to do with safety. I think we have, through this hearing process, figured that out today. What these issues do have to do with is more in the affective realm, the effects on the instructional program, on staff and students and their life on campus, on school's pride, spirit, and support, and most importantly, also, the effects on the community that surround this school. Thank you.
Thank you. So let me, let me see if I can close this one up. So the first one, I think, Jim, why don't you come on up for just a moment? So one of the things I make sure to, I think our staff prides itself on is ensuring the staff reports are accurate, and so I think one of the questions that came up was whether the staff report itself was, was inaccurate. So I'd like you to speak to the, the sentence at the end of the first 1-2, which said, "To date, city staff has not received any feedback on the alternative design." I'm, I'm curious what your interpretation of that meeting that you had was.
So we did have a meeting. The initial meeting was a, as you said, the quarterly meeting, and in that meeting, Board Member Flewer actually brought up that specific alternative, she knew about it. And we had said, hey, you got the alternative, and you're going to look, you called it the Synecory alternative, but anyway. So that came up then. The next day, we had a meeting, Tony Bryan and I, with Mr. Holcomb and Ara, and we did discuss, I basically wanted to hear what Tim, Mr. Holcomb, had to say about the reason for building the banana lot. So he went through the analysis, he talked about the parking, he talked about getting kids closer to the front door, and saying that, you know, that's, to me, it was incrementally safer than my, than the design we had put together. It gets them 30 feet closer to the front door. So that was the discussion, but we never, you know, there were other opportunities. I didn't know if the board had seen it, if they had made a decision, or if it just stopped at staff. So there was no formal, you know, that's not safe, we're not going to move forward with it. We never got that feedback. It was just a discussion, talking about the different opportunities we had there, so.
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Brenner.
Jim, was that the meeting where what I heard back from you was that their main focus was, has the city council approved this plan? Because I know that question was asked later in one of our quarterly meetings, and I said, no, my understanding was that it was a staff-to-staff conversation.
I don't recall. Yeah, I don't recall that.
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Jim, that's good. So I think we've, I think we had a breakdown in communication on this one, on a bunch of levels, and I know Bill Dunlap's comments were a little harsh, but it got me thinking, and, and the truth is that this has been a really tough year, made tougher by what we've, what we've seen and the, the public reaction to it. And at the end of the day, the, as tough a year as this has been, I'm still the mayor of the city, and communication breakdowns ultimately rise to the top. So I'm going to, I'm going to say that I'm going to be redoubling efforts at the city level to make sure that we are continuing to have a good partnership. We have always had a strong, good partnership with our school district, we'll continue to do so, especially as they head into a particularly difficult season, trying to decide how to, how to reopen our, our schools for the children that go there. It's, it's very apparent that there's frustration, it's, it's understood, and so I, I'm just going to say that going forward, I'm going to make sure that our city redoubles its efforts to make sure on our end, the, any communication issues are better, I guess is one way of putting it. To that end, I think one of the videos, I'll just say real quickly, having our police department out there to go inspect something, and having a contractor telling them to, to leave because it's, they're out of their jurisdiction, that's, that's something we're going to need to talk about, because that's one of those things where that's, to me, that strikes me as a breakdown in communication between our, our entities. Our police have always been great about going on and being respectful, and, and having someone tell them to leave is, is inappropriate in that particular situation. So I'll just say, every, pretty much everyone on the school board has my cell number, I believe most of the leadership has my cell number. If there's ever a situation where you believe one of our employees, especially a police officer, should not be there, you call me, we'll, we'll sort it out with our police chief right away. But that's, that's not a video I ever want to see again, quite frankly, and so I'd like to just make sure that we have that, have that communication very clear. I'm going to come back around to the very first comments that Mr. Hurdman made, which is, he went through each of the factors that we are taking a look at. We are, we had, we do have a fairly discreet issue in front of us. I cannot, although I would like to have, although I will admit, I liked the alternative probably a little bit better after talking with our staff. I never had the opportunity to hear the, the discussion on it at a, at a meeting to understand why that didn't work as well as this one, but that is not the standard that we're looking at. Unfortunately, just because we like one alternative over another doesn't mean that we can't make the, the findings that our staff have already made. So because it's a fairly technical one, I'm, I'm probably not going to put in the, the phrase with prejudice, Ms. Dixon, if that's okay, but I think it's pretty well-understood that there's, that the motion, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, why not?
Well, so that, right now, I think that, so what, the motion that I'm going to make is, I'm going to be making a motion to approve staff recommendation, and I can do it with the understanding that it's, with all the comments incorporated in, made here today.
You could restate essentially what, you don't have to use the word prejudice, that's a legal term, but can we just include in there with reluctant approval?
I think that's abundantly clear at the moment.
I want it on the record. That would be my friendly amendment.
Let me just ask, does it, does it cause any heartburn over there, Mr. Harp?
I think it's fine.
Okay, all right, then I'll, I'll accept your friendly amendment, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do I have a second? Actually, you know what, since you made the friendly amendment, I'm going to give you the second.
Okay, I'll be the second with it.
All right, any further discussion?
Before we vote?
Yep, Ms. Brenner.
Before we vote?
Yes, before we vote, yeah.
Okay. I, I just want to say that we know we don't have much power here, and, and we are reluctantly probably going to approve this, which doesn't mean that you can't still look at it again. And because things are so mixed up with the school opening, and we don't know how many kids are going to be showing up on alternate days, and we don't know how that single entry is going to impact traffic, really, you, as a school board, have the option of bringing this back. I know there are contractual agreements with the contractor, but this contractor hasn't made any points with the city of Newport Beach by their actions recently. I, I don't know how hard-nosed they would be about it. So, you know, that's totally up to you, I'm just saying that there still are things that you could do about this to, to bring the community on board and, and look at it and, you know, see if maybe there's some different avenue that we could go, but I will have to approve it.
All right. Well, why don't we go ahead and take the vote, then? So we have the...
Could we have clarification on the motion, please, exactly what we're voting on?
Yep. So currently in front of us is an appeal by Mr. Avery of the approval for the conditional use per, I'm sorry, hang on one second, I just want to get this correct, the, I'm sorry, the encroachment permit. The, the appeal before us is a de novo hearing to decide whether to make the same recommend, or the same findings based on our municipal code found at section 13.06.05, based on the evidence in front of us. The motion is to uphold the findings of the Public Works Director, Director's Decision to Issue Encroachment Permit Number N 2020-0366, but reluctantly. Okay, that's...
Really, really two parts, SEQA and encroachment permit?
That is, that's accurate, although it's a good, just a quick reminder, the decision that we're making on an encroachment permit, making the SEQA findings, is not the same thing as making the SEQA findings on the project itself. So the project itself had its own SEQA findings that were being discussed, so the, the recommendation B is as to the encroachment permit only under the SEQA findings, and the, this would be exempt from the SEQA findings, that would, that specific decision is what we're finding on.
So SEQA only as it relates to the encroachment permit?
That it does not apply correctly, yes, yes. All right, with that, let's go ahead and make the motion. I'm sorry, make the vote.
The motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Muldoon absent.
All right, with that, I'd like to say thank you very much for the time we've taken today, the opportunity to be heard and the opportunity to work together. Like I said, we're going to redouble efforts here, and we'll continue to go forward, especially as we face the difficult situations we find ourselves in on the overalls, school, school reopenings especially. So with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.